Good afternoon. Uh, my name is Zaida Govan. I'm the Ward A City Councilor and now Chairperson of the Maintenance and Development Committee, um, Subcommittee. Uh, he was appointed by, uh, President Jesse Letterman, who's coming in and hopefully, uh, doing his welcome. Thank you so much for, uh, joining us, Counselor.
Good evening, Madam. Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Happy to be here.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. So I want to thank everyone for coming out. Um, and we can just start the meeting since it is one o'clock and we'll have the, um, a public portion. Are we gonna hear any public, uh, comments today?
No, Counselor, you can just move right to the petitions.
Great. Thank you so much. Okay, so the first petition is petition number sixty-eight twenty-one of Verizon Bear Terrence. Is there someone here to speak about petition?
Um, good afternoon. Um, this is Ellen Cummings from Verizon State Government Affairs. We do have, um, folks on today from our, um, engineering. I have one of my right-of-way managers, um, Al Bassett. Um, we also have Sean Conway, who, um, is on our Verizon Wireless side. Um, Al, I believe that we have some of our engineering vendors who have, um, been working with us on that.
Yes, Steve Clawbert. I've been, uh, I did the petitions in the field with the, uh, Mr. Highway Department or, yeah.
Okay, so. Okay, so the, uh, this petition was referred to committee on June sixth. Um, so I think we're gonna hear about, um, what the, what the petition is and, and what the purpose is. Who wants to speak to that?
I think, well, um, why don't we have, um, we'll have our vendors who presented, um, present the petition again as they did, uh, the other night. And then, um, my right-of-way, again, my right-of-way, uh, engineer, Al Bassett, from Verizon is on the line and he can answer any questions you have after, um, we present what the petition is for. If that works for you.
That's fine. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You can go ahead and, um, correct me if I'm wrong, Counselor, uh, Mr. President, should we have them, um, say their name and address here or no? Or that's not necessary?
That's fine, Madam Chair. They can just introduce themselves with their name and title and, um, and they can talk to all the, all the Verizon petitions at once, because I think they're on.
Excellent. Thank you, sir. Go ahead. Al, I think, are you going? Or who's gonna go first?
We're gonna have our vendor, um, who presented, who also, as they presented the petitions the other night in front of the city council. And then, um, um, Mr. Bassett will, um, he'll go, he'll present after that to discuss why we're doing what we're doing.
Okay, that sounds great. And I think I want to welcome, uh, Counselor Maria Perez. Thank you so much for being here.
Hi, everyone.
Okay, you can go ahead, sir, or madam.
Who is the vendor, Ellen? Who's the vendor that you're referring to?
Al, who, who? Uh, he introduced himself, um.
Mr. Sean? Mr. Clawbert?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I attended the meetings in the field. Um, basically, what these petitions are for is for laying conduits, uh, that would be to expand the Verizon to certain poles for the five G network, uh, that Verizon is, uh, placing in Springfield. But in a nutshell, you know, quick summary.
Okay, and I do remember the, um, uh, the presentation. So, uh, what, what, what specific questions, um, did we have, if any, from anyone? Go ahead, uh, Counselor, uh, Letterman.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. So can you speak more to what this actually will involve? The reason that these were referred, uh, to committee was I had been contacted by uh, a few residents on different streets, uh, about the project, which, you know, oftentimes these petitions are fairly routine, but uh, residents had indicated that they, you know, there were actually site meetings held on this. Um, and residents were asked to take a vote of some sort as to whether or not they were in favor of having this occur. So it sounds like the project seems a little more involved than, uh, usually conduit laying would be. So what, what's the nature of the project and what are you actually gonna be doing on each street?
Um, placing conduits along, mostly in the grass. Um, there's a couple of street crossings. And there are some driveway crossings and I'm not exactly sure with the contractor that would be working for Verizon, whether they would cut the driveway or, or under it. I'm not exactly sure. That may be, uh, have to be done at the time of the actual installation as to how the contractor would handle installing that. Um, but everything that's on these plans that, um, you probably have looked over is typically two four-inch conduits running from point to point.
So will you be entering anybody's property to do this?
This is all on the right-of-way or within the right-of-way.
But it is, but it is outside of the public street. It's in the tree belt, in the driveway apron.
Yes.
And how, so why, why is it there? And not normally when these types of things are laid, they're laid in the street. Why is it, why is this farther over and closer to residential property?
It's easier for the project, I think, but also there were some concerns from the Highway Department that there were newly, uh, paved roads in the area and they could not be cut for certain, you know, to put, place this in there.
Okay, and what's the purpose?
If I could just, uh, say this to President, I, I think, and, and Al can, um, chime in too, again, Ellen Cummings, Verizon State Government Affairs. Um, we put, at, at all costs, we don't want to, whether the road is, is with, you know, new within the five years of the moratorium or not. We prefer not to, to, to cut in and dig in the roads. I mean, um, no one wants that. Um, but we do find that sometimes going into the tree belt and placing the conduit, um, you know, in the, in the dirt, so to speak, instead of cutting the, a lot, is the less invasive way for everyone. And again, it's, it's only a, you know, usually a four-inch, uh, conduit that we're talking about. I know, Al, you can probably speak to this better than I can. I can't hear you, Al.
He's not muted, so we should be able to hear him. Now you're muted. Right now. No, no, we can't hear him.
So, Al, you're gonna, you might need to go on mute and call in on your cellphone and use your cellphone as audio. That's another option you can take. Um.
So to President Letterman's point, um, so if you do go into people's driveways after, um, you, the work is done, will you guys be making them whole, repairing their driveway so that, you know, they don't notice that it was there?
Yeah, we take, uh, we take restoration, whether it's, whether it's in a parking lot, whether it's in a driveway, whether it's in, in, you know, in the streets, um, very seriously. Um, we, um, we work close, um, with, um, Mr. Signoli. We want to make sure that if something is not up to, um, the standards of the city, um, that, uh, we would go out and correct it. And, um, we do not, you know, have a problem with that. Um, we're very careful. We leave it, um, as is, but the vast, vast majority of the time, it's better than it was if it's not a brand-new, uh, paving.
Okay, so, and when you went, I think I heard you say that you went to some of the neighborhood councils around? And what were, what were there? Is that true or no?
That is not, that is not true for this. And I'm wondering if that has something to do, um, Madam Chair, with maybe the city project that's going on, because we've been working closely, um, with Mr. Signoli as well to assist the city as they connect different anchor institutions where instead of the city having to place conduit, letting them know that we've been replacing new conduit so they could actually just, um, apply, we'll give them a license and then they can use our conduit. So I'm wondering if, so there's, there are different things going on in the city, um. So I'm wondering if there's some confusion among the residents, um, regarding, uh, you know, different projects. Because we could, when we're looking to do something, um, we're pretty straightforward, what we do, what we're doing, um, so we go to the city.
Okay, okay, thank you. Um, and I see, uh, Counsel Perez's hand.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I have a question because this is new. So actually you have to, um, go in and because I hear concern that is in the driveway of the property owners. You have to cut the street like, and then after you gotta pave it. Um, that's the fact of all this. And I, I just wanna learn the procedure when it comes to placing a conduit. Um, and I think that's the concern that has, has arrived that because they have to cut in the street and, you know, as we all know as counselors, the issue with coming back and leaving those holes. So could you give me more details so I could understand the project, please?
So, Al, I, I don't know if you, okay, great.
I'm, I'm on, I'm finally on, yeah, sorry about that. Something's up with my computer, so. So I think the question, I, I thought I, I got in a little bit late, but on that question, but I think I'm hearing that you're wondering wha- what's gonna occur in terms of restoration when we, let's say, cut across the driveway? Is that the, the question?
Correct.
Yeah, so, yeah, so we're gonna, we're gonna repave that area that we, uh, that we cut into. We'll go, we'll go, we'll cut across. It's about a, maybe about a foot, foot and a half wide trench, maybe two feet. Um, and we just simply pave over the, the area that we, uh, we, we cut across. Uh, and, and it's pretty well blended in with the existing, the existing driveway. So, um, it's something we do all the time and, uh, and if, if for some reason it's not done correctly, while you have my name and number, you can call me. And we would, we would just go out there and, 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 you know, if we had to redo it, we'd redo it.
Now, is that requires a permission from the homeowner as being in their driveway property?
No, because, because the tree belt that we're, we're go, we're going in, which is at the same location of where the, the driveway entry is, that's not private property. That's actually, in fact, the public taking. Uh, a lot of people have a, just sort of misunderstanding that the taking or the, the roadway ends at the paved surface. But we have about ten feet on either side of the road in which to put our utilities, um, and that's not private property, so. It would, it wouldn't be on private property.
Okay, because, and I'm, I'm asking the question because I experienced something like that and although it was the city, when they came to the car and it was touching my private property when it comes to the driveway. And I think that that needs to be explained to, to the, to the people that are concerned. Um, because I experienced an issue like that. So it needs to be clarified that it's, it's part of the city, if not to the constituents. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counselor. Um, Hector Vellas, you have your hand up?
Can you hear me?
Uh, yes, I guess you're on the phone, yes.
Yeah, I'm Hector Vellas, DPW Springfield. I'm representing the board of political work. Uh, the day of the meeting that the resident have a concern, just, uh, how was it gonna be the, a- after uh, repairs? That the, they approved the project, they, uh, but the only concern is they have new driveways and, uh, well, take care lawns and sprinkle systems. And they wanna be sure that e- everything is gonna be better or as if after the, the construction work.
Right, so, so are they assured that it will be that way? Is that?
That's, that's, uh, the contractor, uh, job to do that. There's no sidewalk on that area. That's, uh, it's just, um, the right-of-way, the Eastman is ten feet, there's no sidewalk in that, uh, neighborhood.
So there's a few different, um, places where they're doing this, it looks like, so. Okay, um, Andy, and then we're gonna hear from, uh, Counsel President.
Hello?
Hi there.
Hi, uh, Madam Chair, uh, city councilors, for the record, name is Andy Crar. I'm the city engineer here in Springfield. Um, as, when I finish speaking, I just want, uh, Al, uh, Bassett to jump in and describe some of the procedures that he goes through with our, um, permit, the permit, occupancy permit. Um, Verizon will have to get an occupancy permit through our engineering division. That permit will have an expiration date to it. Um, it'll depend on how long, uh, Verizon believes the project will last for. Um, since coming on board here, I have made some good changes, um, related to how we go about to ensure that these utility companies are doing a better job with their restoration efforts. And when I talk about restoration, I mean roadways, lawns, driveways and things like that. Um, in years past, uh, just from my own inspection, um, I don't think, I don't think, uh, the quality of workmanship in terms of restoration has all been, real, not been really good, okay? Um, what we do now is two additional things. When the utility companies come in with these larger projects, and when I say larger projects, that means installing lines along the road, the tree belt, not just one singular property. Before obtaining their occupancy permit, they're gonna have to reach out to us and conduct a onsite meeting where we discuss our expectations and where the contractor describes in more detail their scope of work. That is starting to go on now. Um, we implemented this, let me just call it a new program last year, late last year. And we're doing it this year, um, on all EverSource gas projects, and I will expect the same from Verizon. When their permit is expired, Verizon will call us. Verizon will call us for a final inspection. And that's where we go out and take a look at the quality of the work and make sure everything was done according to, um, plan and spec in terms of restoration. Um, we've been doing a pretty good job thus far and, and we're trying to improve the process. And I'm happy, I am happy to hear that you called this meeting, because I heard that the concerns, primary concerns were restoration. So I thought this would be a good opportunity to, to introduce myself to you and, and, and briefly talk about, uh, what we've been doing lately in regards to this issue.
Thank you, Andy. That's good. Um, so, uh, President Letterman?
Uh, thanks, Madam Chair. Thanks, Andy, uh, for that detailed explanation and, and for your work. Uh, Chris has definitely, uh, mentioned those efforts as well, so they don't go unnoticed. I, I feel like I, I better understand, uh, the, the process that's gonna be followed relative to the restoration. But I'm wondering if, uh, the representatives from Verizon can, can give us a little more detail now on, on the actual reasoning for it. I mean, I understand you're laying additional conduit to improve the five G network you say you're establishing. So what is the, what, where is the conduit from and where is it to? Because this is only a handful of streets. This is a couple of streets. So is this relative to cell service? I mean, what, what is the actual, what is the actual purpose of expanding the conduits in those areas?
Uh, Ellen, do you want to take that one or?
We will be placing fiber in these conduits, uh, to, um, feed into poles that we will be placing small cells on. I can, I do have Sean Conway on the, on the line. He can speak to, um, small cells in Worcester. Sean? I can see you now.
Oh, sorry, I was double muted. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I can hear you.
Hi, everyone. Yeah. Like Ellen said, we'll be delivering, uh, Verizon will be delivering fiber to certain utility poles in the area for us to expand our five G ultra-wideband network. So within each neighborhood, there'll be a utility pole, we'll, we'll, we will attach, um, antennas to the top or to the comm space. Um, I could share a picture of a, of a similar site if you'd like to see that.
Sure.
All right, let's see here. All right, let's share screen. All right, can you guys see that?
Yes.
Mm-hmm. So this is, um, in the middle there will be the, the set of the antennas and that's, that's, you know, the fiber will come to the pole. We'll go up the pole, be attached to the, um, to the, to the antennas. In this example, that's in the comm space, so it's below the pole top. Um, I can also share an example that is on the pole tops. This would be an example of the, the NR radios on the top of the pole.
And so the purpose of this is to improve cell service?
Correct.
And so do you plan to do this in other neighborhoods?
We, we've done some of this in other neighborhoods, yes, already. And we, we, we do plan to, uh, you know, to work throughout the city.
When was the, when was the last time that you, um, how many do you have to do? When was the last time that you petitioned for it?
Uh, we don't have to petition for the small cells because we're, we're not, you know, everything's aerial in most of our other cases, cases. So we can add the antenna to the, to the utility pole and attach with aerial connections.
Oh, okay. So the issue, the reason you're before us on this one is because for some reason this area doesn't allow you to do that?
Correct.
Got it, got it. All right, um, that makes a lot more sense.
Bringing the fiber, um, Mr. President, is for the small cells, that's to feed the small cells.
Normally you would do this aerial.
Correct. And in this neighborhood, it's all underground, so we have to deliver underground.
Right, okay. All right, that makes a lot more sense. Uh, thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much. Um, and we are joined by Counselor Allen. Uh, Counselor Allen, you can go ahead. Your hand raised.
Thanks, uh, Madam Chair. Um, my question is, does this, uh, add the capability of internet, um, through Verizon?
Well, I, I mean, you have, with, with wireless, you do have, you do have a, uh, broadband, a data application, particularly if you have a s- if you have a, what, for example, a smartphone, you can pull up, um, I mean, you can stream on your phone, you can, you know, you can pull up the internet, anything that requires data. Um, yes, you can, you can do that. So you get that piece, um, from, from wireless, from our, from our wireless network.
Does that answer your question, uh, Counselor? But it's not going to be internet that people could use in their homes? Um, kind of like Xfinity or Spectrum, correct?
Well, right, right, at this, at this juncture, it is, it is to be used with your wireless devices or like a tablet that, that you may have a wireless plan with.
I think Counselor Allen, I think we lost Counselor Allen.
Oh, we did.
But I.
Oh, yeah. Okay, thank you, sir. Yeah, we did. Okay, great. So are there any more questions, any more comments?
I, I have no more questions, Madam Chair, and, and these petitions are all already on, uh, the agenda again for Monday.
Next Monday. Okay, great. But I want to appreciate, um, you all for coming out and giving us more details. I think we have a little bit more clarification now and we're able to, uh, move forward with making any decisions. Also, Alan, Alan is coming back in. Let me see if he has anything else. Counselor Allen, did you have anything else? Did, did you hear the answer? I think he did. Now, would this, this, uh, cell here, uh, help with Counselor Allen's phone when he's on the road like that?
Well, there's, uh, definitely, if it's due to a capacity issue in that, in that location. Definitely would.
That is his district. That is his district. He's probably over there right now.
Well, then.
Probably, he probably needs it. Counselor Allen.
Winner for him.
All right, so I guess we'll see you all on Monday. Is that correct, uh, uh, President Letterman?
Yes, I put everything back on for Monday.
Perfect, perfect. Thank you so much. And I want to thank, uh, Counsel Letterman for helping me, uh, chair my first, uh, ma- uh, Maintenance and Development Committee meeting um, as a chair. Um, I appreciate your support and thank you, everyone, for coming out again.
Madam Chair, I know there's one more petition on there that we referred from Columbia Gas at Counselor Perez's, uh, or from EverSource Gas, I guess.
Oh, EverSource, yes, you're right. I'm so sorry. Thank you so much, uh, President Letterman. So.
But you're also with Verizon, correct?
Yeah, I believe so. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a nice weekend.
All right, so the petition, uh, number seven, uh, EverSource Gas on Moore Street, who's here to speak to that?
Hi, this is Matthew Nichols from EverSource Gas, twenty-twenty-five Roosevelt Ave, Springfield. Um, yeah, so it's just a small project, one street. We're just installing our two-inch medium-pressure main and replacing, uh, four-inch cast iron low-pressure main on that street. And it's all gonna take place in the, in the roadway. We don't plan on going on anyone's private property. Yeah, is there any additional questions?
Anyone have any questions about this?
Yes, I do, um, Madam Chair.
Counselor Perez, yeah?
Okay, um, one other thing that it concerned me and I requested to send it to committee. Are you guys, um, gonna be opening the streets at all to do this project? Um, my concern is that this is the street that we're speaking of in the north end. It's close to the Riverside Street that we experiencing a lot of problems. And I hear you're gonna do this project, but I didn't have the detailed information to give to my constituents. And because of this project, after the Monday meeting, I've been receiving many calls. So that I don't have the exact details of what is it the project, how's the project is gonna progress. And that's why I had sent it to committee, so I could be clear, so I could answer back to my constituents. And that's the dilemma that we have right now with this project.
Yeah, absolutely. So you're, you're just, your question is, uh, how large is the scope?
Yeah, could you describe the project itself? You're gonna be opening streets to go in, you know?
Yeah, so we will, we'll be, we'll be cutting two-inch, or sorry, two-foot-wide trench down the length of the street. It's pretty much the entire, the entire length of the street. Um, from the Riverside to, uh, whatever the, I, I don't remember the name of the street in the middle there, but uh, it's the entire length of Moore Street. Um, and we'll, you know, we won't, we won't be taking up the whole road, so people will still be able to get in and out of their driveways and drive down. Um, but we do plan on, you know, cutting that two-foot-wide trench for the length of the road and we're gonna restore it. And then at the completion of the project, we'll mill and overlay everything, so we'll have fresh new pavement.
So for the committee information, we having, in this war, we have in some issues with the Riverside, um, row aspect because, and I have, I'm gonna be requesting a meeting with the department, the city department. Because the problem is, and I don't know if you have any studies or you know what's going on. The, the Riverside Row is sunken in. I took a tour with a couple of my constituents, because they are concerned, and now they highly concerned of the project. So, um, that's why I wanted to have it in committee and see what directions we're gonna take with this. Um, um, project based on the facts that I was gonna present today to the committee. Um, and probably, um, um, President, um, um, Letterman. Could you just, I'm looking for feedback, because this is a serious issue that we have right now.
Thank you, Counsel Perez, so, Counsel Letterman, did you wanna respond to that?
Yeah, just, just to speak to, um, uh, Counsel Perez's concern, certainly, um. I had also heard about, uh, the Riverside, uh, uh, street issue, and I, and I'm, uh, glad and not surprised you're on top of it. I see Andy has his hand up, so he might have some more information on that, I'd say, um, I, I could see how, uh, residents would, would be wondering about this petition. Because of the proximity to Riverside, it seems like based on the testimony, it's contained to Moore Street. From, from Riverside, past Plainfield, up to Fisk Ave. Um, so it seems like they won't be entering Riverside, but, um, and, and, and I'd also say, I know EverSource Gas has taken over the project. That Columbia Gas previously had, um, been doing it, the city's urging to replace older pipe, uh, that was very leak prone. So, uh, when, when all, actually all three of us, before we were elected, when we were all working with the Climate Justice Coalition, um. You know, that was a campaign that, that started a while ago, I, I think it would make a lot of sense, though, to, um, ask Counselor Gavon to schedule a. Maintenance and Development Committee meeting specifically on Riverside, maybe even on site, uh, at Riverside with DPW and the neighbors. Um, to, to get some answers, and I do see Andy's hand up, so he may have, he may have something, uh, that he can add.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, Andy, go ahead.
Okay, so I, we, as I said before, our new protocol, which has been seemed to working. Be working pretty good, we're getting better, um, we conducted a meeting with EverSource Gas. On Monday, the sixth, as we do now for all of these, uh, linear projects. Um, and I'm just going through some of the notes that I have here. This project, um, we are told will, uh, begin on July fifth, plus or minus. Um, and maybe I'll just get some confirmation from EverSource Gas. The length of the project, the duration of the project will be about one month. Um, the storage of bulky materials will be stocked offsite, uh, not on, not on the street. Um, nothing will be left, um, on the site on weekends and holidays. And the restoration will indeed include the milling and paving of the po. That portion of the road that they disturb, uh, plus or my, plus, plus about maybe five feet or so. Um, mailers were sent out to the residents and abutters, I believe, and. Maybe I can let, um, EverSource confirm that, and I'm just looking at the construction plan. It looks like it extends the full length of Moore Street and comes into Riverside. Um, at its western, uh, side. And at this time, I'm not sure what the condition is of Riverside at that point. I, I, I just don't know at this point, if, if that is in conflict with anything that is sinking, I, I would just have to check on that. Um, so that's what I know about this project. Um, I believe we are about to issue them a occupancy permit, um. And that's about it.
Okay.
I'm not sure if EverSource concurs with, with everything I, I just mentioned.
Andy, pretty much everything you said was on point, um, that's, uh, yeah, that's exactly how it's gonna go. Uh, if the mailers haven't been sent out already, they should be sent out soon, um, and same as you, I'm not, I'm not, uh. Highly informed of this, uh, sinking issue on Riverside Road, but, uh, we can, you know, I'm always available to take a walk out to the site or whatever. And just take a look at it, see what we.
I don't, no, I don't think this is, I, I really don't think this is one of those areas.
Okay.
It's more to the south. I believe it's more to the south, where we have the, uh, issue with the, uh, sinking of the road, more near Abbey and Roland and. Clayton, I think that's where that, that is going on, maybe even, actually, it's near Orchard Street, that's where the big problems are. Much farther to the south.
Okay, so I think we're not going to do a, a site visit over there, I think, with Counselor Perez and, and some of your residents, I think we'll do that. Um, Mr. Velas, you have your hand up, and then we're gonna have Counselor Perez.
Just have a question, uh, the, my question is, the, the meeting with the resident is just for the case of, uh, Riverside?
The sinking part, that's correct.
Okay.
And it could be, it could entail this as well, I'm not sure, um, but yeah, so.
So for the purpose.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Madam Chair, so, um, could I have the floor, please?
Go ahead, ma'am.
Two things that I am concerned, have you notified the New North Citizens Council about this project? So we could have presented in the New North Citizen Council meeting, um. And two, this is new, and I, as a city counselor, this is new information for myself. So, um, and the concern came from some of the constituents that are gonna be affected. And until today, um, I don't think they have received no, um, 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 um. Any communication when it comes to this project, so it's two questions, first, have you addressed this with a neighborhood council?
Uh, I have, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
Oh, I, um, I have not personally spoken with the neighborhood council, um, I wasn't aware that was a requirement, but if, if you could. Get me in touch with somebody, uh, a contact or something, I could certainly reach out to them. Um, and then in terms of the mailers, that, like I said, if those haven't been sent out yet, they should be sent out very soon.
Oh, okay.
They might already be on their way, so.
Okay, and, and the, the, the reason that I emphasize that you do so, because there's a ma, many constituents. That are concerned with this project, and by the description that I've been given right now. This is not a simple project, it's gonna take a length of time, so yes, I will, um. I will direct you, please take this information to, to call Executive Director Maria Ligus. And the phone number is four one three seven four seven zero zero nine zero, and I will follow up. To see if you guys could be at the agenda, because this does concern the very, the neighborhood very high. I mean, um, although it's one side of the south that you're doing this project, it still affect Riverside Row. And I think that the issue of the sunking, we need to determine how more is gonna affect, um. Riverside Street, so therefore I will follow up with anyone that is welcome to contact me. So we could put this, um, meeting in place, thank you so much.
Thank you, Counsel Perez.
I'm sorry, uh, and could you repeat the name and number, and then if there's an email address, do you, can I have that as well?
Yes, the email for, and you could see, see me as well, the email is. M Ligus L I U, I'm sorry, M Ligus L I G U S. At NewNorthCC.org.
And, uh, sorry, well, so it's M L I G U. It could, um, actually, is there a chat box in this, yeah, could you, would you mind typing?
Yeah, I'll put it in chat for you.
Yeah, that'd be great, thank you. Yeah, that's great, thank you.
Okay, thank you, uh, Counsel Perez.
You're welcome.
Is there anything else? Oh. So, um, I think this meeting, this is going to be on the agenda for Monday, correct, uh, President Letterman?
Uh, correct, Madam Chair, you don't have to take any further action today, you can just adjourn the meeting if there's no further, uh, questions, everything's already on the agenda for Monday. And, and counselors can make any motions they'd like at that time. Um, also for the site visit at Riverside, uh, Road, uh, Riverside Street, I think it's a great idea, and, uh, Kelly and Susan and Sean. Can help you set that up, they just have to schedule it a certain way to make clear that it's on site and not virtual or at.
Okay, okay, so I'll, I'll, Counsel Perez, we can talk about when you think that might be good, and we could coordinate it with, um, the council staff.
I will too, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, so if there's no other, uh, agenda items or no other conversation, communication that we have, uh, we can adjourn the meeting.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Well, have a good weekend, thank you. Let, uh, ever so, I mean, uh, you ever source get the, um, information, are you able to get it yet?
Uh, just a second, okay, I got it, thank you.
All right, great, well, thank you, all, you guys have a good weekend.
Thank you so much.